raising their hand.
Okay, thank you so very much, Ms. Martinez. We'll move on down to ceremonial items. Introduction of a new community service, the service officers, David Gonzalez and Fabian Juarez.
And let me move them in.
I've got him here with me, Holly.
Oh, okay, perfect. I just have a Mr. Gonzalez there. So is that not him?
No, he's sitting with me, actually.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's good to see everybody. Apologize about this being over Zoom or really like it to be in person. But I'm excited to introduce two new employees for the City of Alamosa Police Department. First off, David Gonzalez, he is a San Luis Valley native. Dave grew up in Alamosa. He attended our local Alamosa schools. David joined the Alamosa Police Department as one of our newest community service officers in January of 2020. David was employed previously with the City of Alamosa, working with the Streets Department and Facilities Maintenance for nearly seven years before applying for the Police Department position. David has three wonderful children with his wife Alicia, and he's a great dad, and we are very excited to have him part of the City of Alamosa family. He's in here, so I'm gonna let him take my seat and introduce himself.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the City Council. It's an honor and a privilege to work for the city. I'm excited to start my new journey with Police Department and see where it takes me.
Great. So, thank you so very much. We welcome aboard.
Thank you, David. Welcome. And we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right, and the next individual I'm gonna introduce you to is Fabian Juarez. Fabian is a San Luis Valley native. He also grew up in Alamosa. Fabian attended our local Alamosa schools, and after high school, he obtained his EMT certification and joined the Alamosa Fire Department about eight years ago. Fabian was previously employed with the Alamosa County Sheriff's Office as a jail deputy until being hired on with the Alamosa Police Department as one of our newest community service officers in January of 2020 as well. Fabian has five wonderful children, and from what I've seen, he is a great dad, and we are also very excited to have him part of the City of Alamosa family. Fabian, come on over. How's it going?
See you, Fabian.
Oh, Fabian. Welcome, welcome aboard.
Nice to be here.
Well, we wanted a speech.
Fabian's a little shy.
Good speech, good speech.
I could get him to talk, but we're pretty excited to have these guys, so I'm happy to be able to introduce you guys to them, so.
Hey, Ken, I remember a time when that was about how much you talked.
It happened.
Right?
He'll get there.
Well, we want to welcome both of them aboard, and I see Counselor Hensley, she's had her hand up. So we recognize Counselor Hensley.
So Chief, I don't know if David and Fabian can still hear through there, if they're still there, but I just want to welcome both of them. It's great to have two local people that really love our community and want to do more for our community and stay in our community. And I know these are challenging times, and I appreciate them, and I appreciate everybody on the police force, and looking forward to everything they're doing and what you all do together as a team, and just really want to let you all know how we appreciate you and to welcome David and Fabian.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and Counselor Broyles, you have your hands up.
Yeah, I'd just like to, can you kind of tell us what the general responsibilities are for a community service officer?
I sure can. So David actually took over one of the regular assignments for community service officer, which is basically working our ordinance violations, our weeds, snow removal, abandoned vehicles, abatement of properties. Now Fabian's position's a little different. Fabian's position is the newer community service officer position, which is related more to our parks, restrooms, the unsheltered population. He checks daily on the, on the City of Alamosa homeless camp. He does that as well. What am I missing? He's got a lot of responsibilities, I can tell you that much. You know, he's definitely busy. They both are very busy. And they're both pretty new to the position. I know we hired him in January, but we have got one more position open because our last CSO, Mr. Earls, actually moved back down to Texas, so we've got that position that we're looking at as well.
Thank you. Good job.
You bet.
Thank you, Chief. Up next, we have Counselor Carson.
I just wanted to kind of reiterate and build on what Liz said. Thank you, guys, and welcome to the team, and yes, it's kind of a rough time to step up and take these jobs. And so I just want you to know that I, for sure, and I know I'm not, you know, I don't just want to speak for anybody, but I know council appreciates you guys. So good luck and good luck to both the new position as well. I'm sure that's pretty interesting, kind of a new realm of police work in a sense there. And thank you, Chief, for finding such good people. You guys do a great job, and we just want to, I just wanted to tell you that we really appreciate you guys. I know it's tough out there right now, and thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the chief for the job he's doing with his department, and we're hiring local and especially Hispanics in our community that are coming through, and that only goes to show the diversity in our, in our Police Department and how he respects the community and stuff. So I want to congratulate him on how he runs his department, and and I've known Chief Anderson for a lot of years, and he does a great job. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Okay, and Chief, I too would like to thank you and your staff, and I wish everyone much success.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, council, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar A. If you'd like to raise your hand and make a motion so I can recognize you, Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Counselor Grego.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, up next on the regular business, we have a presentation from outside agency, the lead update. I believe Ms. Brooks is going to take the lead on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and we've got a group here. Holly, I believe, is probably letting in Clarissa and Carrie. Yep, I see them there. So this is our quarterly update that we do on this, this program since we started it. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Clarissa and Carrie, and they'll take it from there.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Holly, there should also be Scott in the waiting room. He was gonna join us from the DA's office.
That was a surprise. Didn't know he was coming. Wait a minute now.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen. So I did something different this time for our update. I actually put together a little PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to share my screen so everyone can see it. Okay, can you see it? Okay, perfect. All right, so this is our quarterly report since our last meeting in July. And for this report, I know I usually just bring you updated numbers since our last report, but I thought it'd be nice to give an overall picture of where we're at since we've been going in April of 2018. So since our beginning of our program back in April, we received our first referral back in May of 2018. So from there to date now, we have completed 103 referrals. And so out of the 103 and three referrals, you can see there that I did break it down between the different types of referrals that we receive, our diversion referrals, how many from each of the departments that we receive for diversion referrals, and our social referrals. The total number served on the bottom is 70, and so the difference there is really the number of participants who qualified for our program and were eligible and had completed our intake, had, had contact with our case managers and had been engaged in, you know, various ways. And so that's that total number of people who have actually been touched and contacted in some way for, through our program. And so although these referrals come from these different departments, I just want to highlight that we do service the entire valley because the referrals span throughout the valley. You know, we have a lot of people who visit the different communities, and so through those interactions, we receive referrals, but they do live in different parts of the valley. We have also expanded our program into the different communities, and so since we've been going in Alamosa, we've since expanded over to Cunehos County and as well as Raro Grande County, and within those counties, we work with different departments. Our most recent one that's reached out to us is Delner Police Department, and so they are getting trained and getting prepared to start making referrals to the program as well. Pre-COVID, our referrals were picking up, and so our departments are really, you know, utilizing our resource and making referrals, and once we were hit with COVID and we were forced to, you know, quarantine and being home and not take referrals or meet with people face to face, our team really had to work diligently to figure out creative ways to to continue engaging with the people that we were working with, maintaining contact with our participants. And so we worked with our partners in the community to collaborate efforts, and we had a lot of support, and it was just amazing to see our community come together. And so since then, we have started taking referrals again back in July, and since we've been taking referrals again, our numbers are starting to pick up. I just wanted to provide this as just kind of an option for you guys to see. These are a list of all of our services, supports and resources that all of our case managers work to connect our participants to. And so as you can see, it's a big list. And so it is, it's very time consuming. It takes a lot of work for our case managers to work with our participants once they're referred to get them connected to supports and services. And so I just wanted to also highlight that prior to COVID, our case managers were providing a lot of transportation for a lot of these appointments and resources in order to provide support and guidance and just to be there for our participants. And so since COVID, we have not been able to provide transportation and, you know, and working in adherence to our public health guidelines. We have not been able to do that. So our case managers, again, have been able to work with our partners and really work diligently and creatively to make sure that our participants continue to receive the same types of supports and services. And it is, again, a lot of time on the phone, talking to our partners, making appointments, that care coordination piece is very time consuming. And so when you look at the number of participants that we do serve out of that 70, although we don't serve a 70 all at one time, it does ebb and flow, and so our case managers' caseloads fluctuate constantly all the time. And so we can get, you know, our participants to a good place, and they could be able to do things on their own, and they're able to go out in the community and maintain, you know, their supports and their resources and services that they're connected to. But then later, they may come back just to want to connect with our case managers. It's been shown that their engagement with our case managers has been a key part of their ability to maintain a lot of their, their pathways. And so reaching out to our case managers happens quite frequently for our participants, and so success stories. So I know people love hearing our success stories, and I only chose two for this time out of so many that we could choose from. And so I, I'm putting them up on the screen for you to see, but for this first one, I really wanted to talk about the way that we were able to receive this participant, and so it was a social referral who had come into us from the officers. And, you know, I just, it was heartwarming just to see the advocacy from the officer to get this person into the program. And so once they were referred to our program, he was, unfortunately, he was picked up for a warrant and had to go into jail, but the ability for the jail to work with our case managers to coordinate opportunities for our case manager to have contact with him to make sure we had, you know, a plan set up for when he was going to be released. He did receive the VIVITROL shot now that our jail in Alamosa does provide those in the jail, which is a nice support for our participants especially. And so he did receive that while he was in there, and he was really driven by keeping his sobriety. And so while he was in there, we worked with him and coordinated some care and services for him. And once he was released, he, he actually reached out to our case manager and initiated that contact so she could meet with him. We did provide a hotel for him just because he had nowhere to go, and we wanted to make sure he was stable in, in his path into, you know, all the hard work that he done. So when our case manager met with him, this is a quote that he had shared, or she shared, that he said when she met with him during her meeting with him. It was just very moving to hear that, that non-judgmental perspective and interactions and, you know, really treating him as a person meant so much to him, and so it was very impactful for us to hear that, and it's always nice to hear how we're able to help people in their roughest times. Another one that I just put on here was just the ability of our care, our case managers to provide some care coordination for a participant who had just recently moved into the valley and was trying to find ways to get connected for her MAT services. And so we worked with the SLB MAP program to get her connected to that program to get her signed up, and so she was able to maintain her sobriety as well. So just some successful stories that I like to share. And the next slide, I am actually sharing some community partner quotes that some of our partners had so kindly shared with us. And so although we work with participants, we also, also work very closely with our community partners. And I think it's important to also highlight the work that we do with them because it takes all of us working together to make sure we're, you know, helping our participants, and it's not just our, our program as a lead, it's all of our program. And so it is important that, you know, we highlight and mention our partners too. And I am actually going to hand it off to Scott, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And hand it to Scott from the DA's office.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Dillon. I serve as a lead liaison for Lead in the 12th Judicial District Attorney's Office. I work inside the Judicial District Attorney's Office. Carrie asked me to come with a kind of a few bullet points for you guys because I have access to some of the court systems, and I'm able to track arrests and sort of things like that. Before I start, I want to say that this research or the statistics that I put together are, they're entirely preliminary because the state is putting together an evaluation that we will have shortly. But this is kind of just to serve as an indicator how the program's going, what we're seeing, if it's working, that kind of thing. And when I went through it, the biggest thing that stood out to me is when we have active participants, that means participants that are active and engaged with their case managers, they're communicating, they're setting up meetings, attending those meetings. We actually see a decrease in recidivism that's quite great, almost 30%. And that's comparing the number of arrests they had the year prior to joining Lead to the number of arrests they had the year after Lead. So this is only for participants that have been in the program for a year and that we can collect this data. And because it's such a small sample size and the timeframe so small, their outliers have quite an effect on this. So like I said, these numbers are preliminary, but the program is working as it should when participants are engaging with their case managers. The opposite is true as well, though, and I think that's worth noting. When they aren't active with their case managers, we don't see any reduction in recidivism. So this engagement is crucial to the program. It's actually what the program kind of rests its head on. It's something that we need moving forward to think about how we can increase engagement and stuff like this. Another thing I want us to know is the effect that COVID-19 has had. I've noticed because this engagement's so important to us and because the current social circumstances we're under, people can't really meet face to face, and these meetings have become quite harder. And so this has had an effect on the, the program's efficacy, and that's kind of a, something we kind of have to deal with. We have less referrals, we have less options to meet with our people and engage them, and we're doing the best we can, but it has taken an effect, and it's going to be noticeable when we see this evaluation from the, the state, state's evaluation team. She also wanted, Carrie also wanted me to kind of provide a perspective of what the District Attorney Office feels the lead program is, and I think the biggest thing is that it provides us with another tool. I say this a lot. It's provides us with another tool for the attorneys. They can, instead of prosecuting the same people over and over again for the same low-level drug charges, it allows the attorneys to have kind of a different avenue that they can go down to help these people, and that Lead kind of gives them this opportunity to put them in this unique case management type thing where there's specialized case management for the individual, and that's something that the District Attorney's Office really supports because regardless of the efficacy of Lead, even though I do think it's effective when we have people, we're learning a lot about how we can help these people in this pilot program, and I think that's something that's extremely valuable. And it's something that the District Attorney's Office supports moving forward because we're just trying to find the best way to help this community we serve. And as it is in my opinion, I've grown up in the San Luis Valley my whole life, and I think something like this, it makes me proud of the city and the place I live in, that we're actually trying to do something like this, that we're thinking outside of the box, where we face this ginormous problem, and we don't know the solution, but we're gonna try and we're continuing to improve. And the lead program's great about that. We continually improve the, during policy meetings, we try to improve the program's efficacy. And that's something I'm just really proud of as a citizen. That's all I really had to say. I hope that's enough, Carrie. Thank you all for having me. It's a pleasure talking to you all again.
Thanks, Scott. Chief Anderson.
Yeah, so over two years now, I guess, is what we've been doing this. Some of the things that I've seen, obviously because the guys and myself occasionally are out on the street seeing this really face to face. I mean, Scott made a lot of good points. Some of the things that really affect the City Police Department in relation to Lead. We worked real close with, with Carrie and her staff to train the new officers. It is a culture change for us, for us. It's not something that we understood right away. It's taken a while. But it has gotten to the point now where it's, it's become part of the way we train. And, you know, we're gonna evolve with that, and I think it's starting to actually make an impact, believe it or not. The difference with the interactions with the, the community, the biggest thing that we're seeing, and it's affecting our, our call volume, are the reoffenders. I know I've made a referral myself that, you know, I've talked to Carrie a few times on this, but it was one of those that I was kind of taking a shot in the dark, but believe it, it actually helped. I mean, he's an outstanding member of the community now. He's got a full-time job. We were dealing with him really almost daily. And, you know, I think that's changed his entire family, not just him. So, I mean, that's, that's a real positive thing. The, you know, we've talked about the, the reoffenders and, you know, how much that takes our time to deal with. It is not the silver bullet. This program's not the silver bullet that's gonna stop everything, but this has given us that little push from what we used to do in the past, which was the same thing week in and week out. We're making the arrests, and you know what? They, they go to jail, they get out of jail, they reoffend again. We just didn't have another option. We do now, and I, I think you guys know my personality good enough by now that, you know, that I'm not, I don't sell right away. I'm starting to get to that point now where I'm really believing in the program and what it's doing for not just the individuals, but for the community and cleaning up the community. And we've got a lot of work to go. We have a lot of work to go. I know I've got work to do as far as the people that we cannot get into this program, and I'm working on that. We will never stop going after the drug dealer. That's my job. We'll keep doing it. But it definitely helps having a program like this for the individuals to get mixed up into it and need help and no, no options. They don't know what to do. And now the officers have a little bit of firsthand knowledge and some people we can actually reach out to. So COVID has, has played a tricky, tricky part of, of this year in us making referrals, but I think we've surpassed the 50 referral mark, and we're gonna continue to do so. So, you know, we don't look at changing the way we're operating. We just look at working a little closer with Lead and trying to find other alternative solutions to the problems. So I think it's going great. I guess that was a long answer, but it's going a little good, so.
Thank you, Chief, and council members. I see your hands raised after they finish their presentation. I allow you to ask your questions in order that I see your hands raised. So I'll, I'll let the lead group finish their presentation.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. As I, you know, CRP houses this team. And so I get to observe, I get to watch. Sometimes I jump in and I get to help, which is really awesome. I am watching how hard they're working, and they have to be so creative. It's a pilot, so they're developing it as we go. And the state office and the evaluation team has only had just wonderful comments about our team and our community. And it just warms my heart every time. It's like I want them to come visit because I want to show off on this program. And I always want to remind everybody that this, this team, which is awesome, and they're working so very hard, they're linking and helping these participants like get to our community resources, because we have lots of resources, we have lots of different things we can provide with treatment and housing, and and yet these people need help, they need some support to get there. And so that's what our job is as far as, as the lead case management team. But the lead program, our job is to keep, you know, working together and having good programs that we can link them to. And so that's just something I always want to say over and over again. And the other thing I just want to say about the intensive case management that this team does is they don't give up. So if a client like stops showing up, they don't say, well, I guess he doesn't want the service. Bye. They go find them. They don't say, well, he came in and he was using, and he can't be in this program. No. They talk about what's appropriate when they can see him, how we're gonna make it work. And so it's, it's, it's a very intense program because it's individualized and it's not the same. So every single person gets their own individualized program. The, no cookie cutter, not, this is how you do it. It's different every time. And so I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to Carrie and her team. So I, I think we might be done.
Thank you. Thank you, Clarissa, Carrie, Scott, and Chief Anderson. Thank you for that report. So I see several hands up from council members who would like to ask you questions. I have this order, Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson?
I just had a couple of things to say, one question and one comment. First of all, thank you guys for continuing to push forward with this program and, you know, continuing to have success. I know with something pilot, you're always gonna have challenges, but like, like it's been already iterated. You guys have pushed through that and found new ways to do it, and I appreciate that, and the community does as well. So thank you. One question is, now, I heard you guys, and I may have missed it, so I heard you guys say that for COVID, you guys faced challenges, and I did, I did hear Clarissa say that you guys stopped saying, seeing clients? Or how did you guys do that? How did you manage to do it? I know how some other organizations did it. I'm just curious to see how you guys did it.
Right, so we really worked closely with, with their outreach team, even some of the officers to maintain some contact, and so we bought some cell phones so they could give to our participants that we haven't had contact with, so we could connect with them again. We worked with Sunset Inn was one that let us use their internet and their computers to do some virtual meetings with our participants to maintain some face-to-face because that face-to-face contact was so important for some of our participants. And so I, I was just, like I said, I was very humbled when our community was willing to step up and, you know, help us maintain some contact and outreach to our participants.
Okay. I, I was just curious because I had heard of, and I didn't know if you guys had access to some of that carriers running or not, or stuff like that, but I know some entities that kind of bought laptops and were having them dropped off and sanitized, brought back, things like that to communicate, and so I was just curious as to what your guys' approach was, but that's, that's good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't believe it's already been two years that this program's been, been in effect and the success, and now that you're branching out to other counties and, and then spreading it out throughout the whole San Luis Valley. One question that I had, and it comes up all the time, is how does the funding for a program like this work in, in? And how do we match it with the success with the program? I don't know. Is that something that maybe Carrie could answer, or who would answer that? And I don't want you to go in deep depth about the whole funding part of it, but there's questions about the funding and the success of the program.
So it's somewhat kind of two questions there, Charlie, and I'll take a stab in. So this is what I feel like, at least from a city perspective, I don't know how it compares to the other grants that CRP is used to working with. But from a city perspective, it's a unique grant in that it's 100% funded from the state. Now, clearly, there's a lot of in-kind work, both from our prosecutor for the municipal level, the District Attorney's Office for those prosecutors and attorneys, to the police officers and the chief. We could have written the grant to compensate for some of that time, but we specifically didn't because we wanted to be able to put that money towards the actual tangible output of the program. And so we wrote the grant, so the money coming through the state. And as I've talked to people in the community and in other communities, because this is actually a program that we've been interviewed by other communities about and been showcased for. And we didn't create it, but we're small and rural, and I think we're one of the smaller ones in the nation. So it's interesting for other smaller communities. But what I've said is, for a community like us with limited resources, there's no way we could have taken the shot in the dark to see if it was going to work, as the chief indicates, of putting that much funding towards a program that we weren't sure about. And so the grant funding from the state was critical. And their continued support is what helps us to be able to continue to allow this for the whole valley. If that support were to go away, we would have to scale that down. But I think at this point, seeing the results that we've seen and knowing the conversations councils had during budget conversations, we would find a way to keep it for Alamosa, and how would we make that work? So the funding is significant because it's paying for caseworkers. It's paying for the position in the District Attorney's Office. And so that's kind of a majority of it. But then that slide that Carrie showed that has all the wraparound. So sometimes that person might need a phone, or they might need a few days in a hotel before we can get them into housing, or a few weeks. Or they might need help with transportation or clothes to go for a job interview, or, you know, those different things. But again, the grant pays for that. And your other question in regards to success, that's a hard question. It's a question I think people want a direct answer to, and I think that's fair to want a direct answer. But when you're dealing with change like this, what, how you define success, and I've heard Carrie and Clarissa say this over and over, how you define, how do you define success? Like, we can give you numbers, which is how many have been referred, how many are currently engaged. We could start to provide numbers of those who, you know, maybe aren't engaging as much because they may not need to, type of thing. And the longer this program goes on, you know, we'll better have more of those people who've moved through. And, but there's always going to be there. We can show the recidivism numbers and the numbers that Scott went over, as far as if they're engaged, how they're 30% less likely to reoffend, type of situation. That's just with two years of data. I mean, imagine once this gets more. So those are, those are numbers we can provide. But when you talk, the example that Chief Anderson shared of someone who wasn't having, didn't have a job, they had some other issues, they were interacting with police on a daily basis, and now they have a job, they're not interacting with police, they're reconnected with their family because that connection had been broken. I don't know how you define that kind of success. So that's, so it's hard to give a direct answer like that. But I want to, Clarissa and Carrie, did I miss anything to answer Councilor Grego's question?
No, you did a good job. Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, Heather, I appreciate the explanation. And even if one person, if we're successful with one person, the program is paid for itself regardless of what it costs. And I've always said that there has got to be an alternative for jail. Jail's not the answer. You know, there's people that have problems out there. And if we got a program that can help them out in some way, I'm for it for 100%. Thank you, Mayor.
And I guess, you know, and it's hard to measure the, what's not happening. So if they're not offending, that means there's not a victim. There's not a store that's being stolen from. There's not a car being broken into, whatever that. So I don't know how you can measure what's not happening, but it's not happening. So there's fewer victims in our community. And they are working and contributing. And our officer's time isn't having to be used up on interacting with them on a daily basis. And we're not paying tax dollars to hold them in jail, knowing that that's not going to change the behavior. So there's, there's those factors and costs and the type of situation tied up with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carrie and Clarissa, and Chief Anderson and Scott and Heather. I know you all spend so much time and energy in this program. And I just feel fortunate that I get to be on the Lead Policy Group as well as get to work with you in other ways. And I think the slide you showed this time is very, very telling. But also, that big list of things doesn't even begin to show all of the connections and all of the work and all of the legwork that goes in behind the scenes. And I feel like what we've been able to say now as a community because of this program and as partners in different ways, is that we really need flexible funding to be able to meet participants, people where they actually are versus funding for certain specific things that are in this mold. And I think the more we can say that as policy people, council, and the more we can say that as people who are voting and people who are getting out there and saying, "Stop telling us how to do things in our community. Let us figure it out." I mean, within reason, of course. But I think the Lead Program has really been able to show, we are able to meet people where they are. We can provide them services and supports, and by being flexible with how we serve them, we get better outcomes. The stories, and I get to read the reports and I get, you know, it's super cool. But the story, reading that just on the slide, it brought tears to my eyes. Thinking about the way we can get people into services differently now, and thinking about the way families are forever going to be changed because of this. We need to celebrate that, and then we need to say we need more funding like this. And how do we do that? And how do we show that this is what really makes a difference for people? And so I just want to say, I know that all of you advocate that way, and I so appreciate it. But as other opportunities come up and as other places where we need to advocate, please do share those with us. I think we'll be sharing them with you all, so we can advocate for the same things with flexible funding. Otherwise, we're going to get back in the rut after, because this funding isn't going to last forever. And so how do we make sure that we continue with the same types of services with that individuality that we need? And so I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing, but also that it's time to advocate at a bigger level to ensure more funding like this makes its way to our community. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Okay, at this time, council, I don't see any other hands raised. If you have any other comments you would like to make, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you at this point. If not, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. I don't see any hands raised. So it's been said that insanity is doing the same thing over and over, but expecting different results. I'm very glad that we have a team and a program in Lead that gives us the tools and the resources to explore options that will help us have success in trying new options such as Lead. So I would like to thank the entire Lead Team for the work that you're doing, and I wish you continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay, council, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Item B, 1A, request for a fee waiver for the flats at Iron Horse.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm not going to spend too much time on this since we talked about it at length during the work session we had two weeks ago. However, before you, you know, really, what we're looking at is a fee swap or a fee waiver in order to offset some of the unexpected cost of building the full Carroll Street for the flats at Iron Horse, affordable housing development. And so kind of after looking at the different options and looking at the numbers, what staff is recommending to city council is to waive the building permit fees as well as the water and sewer tap fees, which results in about a $109,000 fee waiver in exchange for the city to be the beneficiary of a cost recovery zone for that recoverable portion of constructed Carroll Street. And one minor kind of change in there is that, you know, we're not completely sure what the cost of that street is going to be. So we'll waive up to the $109,066.05 or the actual built cost of the, you know, southern half of Carroll Street. So we'll kind of have to figure that out when we get the cost recovery zone started. But certainly, staff thinks that this is a fair and decent proposal. It helps encourage affordable housing development within the city for a group that is historically underserved. And it also has some consistency with the fact that we've done similar arrangements with Alamosa County and Habitat for Humanity in the past as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Aspenwall. Counsel, do you have any comments? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, Councilor Carson?
You're unmute, Councilor Carson.
Sorry, one quick question, and then just to put it out there, as soon as I ask this, I'm okay with making a motion if you guys are. Rest of council is what I'm asking. But I had one question, just for clarity. The $109,000 and change is the cap, and we will not exceed that. So if the total is 160, we'll hit the 80,000 mark. Total's 140, we hit the 70,000 and so on, right?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. Okay, unless anybody else has any questions, I would make a motion that we approve the fee waiver.
We have Councilor Grego.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Martinez, will you please take the role?
Let me just interrupt. I was trying to process the math in my head from Councilor Carson's question. And it sounded, Councilor Carson, like you were dividing amounts in half, but I don't think that's what's going to happen.
Well, he said that we would, it was half of the cost of the build of the street, correct, which is 109,000 cap?
For that half. So if that half is in at 70,000, then we're only going to waive 70,000. If that half of the-
That's what I meant.
Yeah, that's what we knew. So if that-
That's what I meant. Maybe I stated it wrong, but that's what I was, that's what I meant. So, yeah, we're fine. I understand it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Carson. Thank you, Mr. Suezao. Okay, so we had a motion, a second, and Ms. Martinez was about to take the vote.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next, under item 1B, we have the first reading of ordinance number 27-2020.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance arises out of a realization that when we adopted the UDC, we limited the types of security that we will accept for performance of public infrastructure, maybe a little bit tighter than we needed to. And we actually did this consciously back in 2018. We thought about allowing performance bonds as security for installing infrastructure as part of a subdivision improvements agreement, but elected not to because in distinction to either a cash bond that's held by the city or a letter of credit that's held by the city, performance bonds can allow for defenses to the lack of performance to be interposed. And because of that, they can greatly delay the time in getting payout on a bond when there's a default by a developer. They can also allow in a court battle wherein it may be determined that the developer didn't actually default, even though the city asserts that they did. However, there are, there are things that we can do to address those shortcomings from the city's perspective in performance bonds that still allow them as an option that may be more attractive to developers because they may be cheaper or easier to acquire. And that is conditioning the performance bond or insisting that the performance bond be waive all of those kinds of defenses and that the city be able to call the bond out by submitting a, essentially, a letter of default to the surety. So this ordinance makes provision for allowing performance bonds that are conditioned in that way in order to secure obligation to install public infrastructure. As you see in the alternatives presented in the council communication, you could also decide that the use of performance bonds doesn't really need to be that restricted. And we could just allow a typical performance bond that would allow those defenses to be asserted by the surety. Or we could just also stick with the way we currently have it, which is the only security that we will accept is a cash bond or a letter of credit.
Thank you, Mr. Suezao. We have a couple of questions for you. In order, Councilor Carson, followed by Councilor Daniel. You're muted, Councilor Carson.
Yeah, I got you. I don't necessarily have questions. I read up on these a little bit. And so if Counselor Daniels has a question, we can let her go first. I was just going to see if everybody was finally making a motion that we approve ordinance number 27-2020. So we can let Counselor Daniel chime in if she wants.
Thanks. Yeah, I do have a, I do have a question. So thank you, Councilor Carson. Mayor, if it's okay, I apologize.
No, that's fine. Go ahead. Then we have Councilor Broyles, followed by you. So let's go ahead.
Thank you. So Eric, when I read the background material and then I read the ordinance, how do, how do we guarantee that it's properly conditioned? Will the same language always be there? And what if rules change? I'm just wondering how we can say we'll have an ordinance that says it will be properly conditioned when things may change? I just, can you help me with that?
Well, so we don't, in the process of approving security for a subdivision agreement, we don't have to accept any kind of security. So if the performance bond that's presented to us doesn't have the sufficient provisions that waive defenses and that allow us to trigger it just by declaring the default, then we won't accept it. So unlike cash or a letter of credit, there's really, you know, if you have either of those, you're going to accept those. But the performance bond is something where the terms of the bond that we accept are individually negotiated.
Okay, so every time, we would do a different evaluation depending on what bond came forward?
Correct. And also, the, what we consider to be the adequacy of the surety who's issuing that bond. So if it's issued by a surety that's got a C rating from Moody's or something, we may say, you know, no, we're not, we don't, we're not going to take that one.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel a lot better. I appreciated the way it was written. I just wasn't sure how we were going to uphold that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. We have a couple more hands up. Councilor Broyles, followed by Councilor Grego.
Are you saying now that we will not accept, that we don't have a provision to accept performance bonds?
That's correct. We only accept cash or letters of credit.
Yeah, and performance bonds are very hard to get, and it's only going to be pretty credit-worthy companies to get them. Well, I guess my other question is- Well, I guess my other question is, if we, I think those waivers are important, why don't we have a requirement that we have that we waive, that they waive those rights that you explained? Because the performance bonds that I've been involved with, they all end up in litigation. So why not just make the waivers upfront that we will, that they will waive litigation or go to arbitration, whatever the legal term would be?
Yeah, that's staff's recommendation is that that the ordinance as proposed requires that if we're going to accept a performance bond, it has to waive defenses and it has to allow for just presentation of a declaration of default by the city.
Right, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls, Counsel Grego.
The only, I was going to make a comment, this is a first reading, Mayor, and it's supposed to be, obviously set for a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yes, sir, so we have Counsel Carson amend his motion.
Please.
Why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
Well, there's a motion on the floor. So.
No, I hadn't made a motion, I I said that if, I said I would back off until until Counselor Daniels and everyone had commented because I figured there may be other comments. So I never, I never officially made a motion, I don't think I did, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you did. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we prove on first reading ordinance twenty-seven and set it for a public hearing on November fourth at seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, if so, raise your hand so I can recognize you. Okay, I don't see any hands. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yep, Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Carson?
Yes.
Counsel Grego? Counsel Hensley? You were unmute, I just want your voice recorded.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. The next item under finance is the public hearing and second reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty, and ordinance making the annual appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the second we reading, so I'll be brief, although there is a bit of some new stuff from the CIP for Parks and Recreation. And so the overall budget for twenty-twenty-one, we are expecting the general fund revenue to increase about two point five percent from the previous year. We are seeing some other decreases in some other specific revenues and and kind of being conservative as we move forward with those. We are excited that the lead grant was extended into next year. We are looking at a one-time market salary survey that was budgeted for forty thousand out of the HR budget. We also have some other increases, minor increases such as for the audit and those types of things. We are replacing one of our K nine units, so we do have a ten thousand one time in the general fund for that. We are adding an additional seasonal employee to the streets department. We do have some carryover from projects from twenty-twenty, such as the Washington Edition, the Wayfinding signage. For the enterprise fund, we didn't need to increase anything beyond what councils already set out in the ordinance of twenty-eighteen, so it's a five percent increase for water, seven percent for sewer, four percent for sanitation. We did add back in revenue for the recycling program, there is significant amount of capital projects out of the enterprise fund and for the water augmentation. The street trust fund, as promised, we are moving five hundred thousand from the general fund to the street trust fund. And we are excited that sales tax has performed because this is an area for our capital projects that would have greatly been impacted if sales tax was not performing. So we are still able to keep up with that timeframe that we presented to the to the residents. The other funds look to be very stable. The only thing I did want to share my screen, because this is the part that is new, is as you know, when we discussed the capital improvement program, we talked about making changes so we could fund more capital projects out of the Park and Recreation Fund, and that involved moving the debt back into the Parks and Rec Fund, but removing the cost allocation until they can afford that. So that did allow us to do about two hundred thousand per year, which is feels like Christmas, I think, for Parks and Recreation, because they were having to do capital projects with just fifty thousand. So it feels a lot better, but keep in mind, we have at least two facilities, we've got our parks, we've got all the equipment, the trails, all of those programming needs to come out of of that Parks Fund, and so two hundred thousand can go quickly. So what you should see on my screen is some of it is from a fleet perspective, out of our departments, Parks and Rec was the one that usually did get the hand-me-downs and that can work for a while, but it was not starting to work. So we've got a new water truck, small park, small tractor, a parks mower, new skid steerer, rec vehicle, new bucket, well, used bucket truck, new to us, twenty-twenty-three has a golf tractor, some new parks vehicles, a parks dedicated four-wheeler, a Zamboni, which was already scheduled, a park sweeper and VAC implement, some equipment for the golf that's not included with the equipment that we've done the lease. And then let me scroll quickly to the other Parks and Rec funding. We also are looking at for facilities, the library back porch fence, the windows at the rec center, the attic ventilation at the golf, that's one that's lingered there for a while, actually, even before the city operations of it. A roof extension over the AC units, HVAC upgrade at the rec center. And I'm going to scroll a little bit more, and here's some more parks and rec. So it really is kind of exciting to see more than two projects for Parks and Recreation. So tennis courts resurfacing, resurfacing, that was already in there, but we were able to also then add replacement of the spin bikes, the lighting on the Cold Park pedestrian bridge, and then the golf fusion welding machine. The, this is because of the requirements of if the irrigation system goes down at the golf course, it's it's something that needs to be fused and welded together instead of kind of a more traditional fix. This was already budgeted, the upper track, a restroom out at the ranch or the ranch area, another greens roller there, some equipment at the rec center, the lighting at the fairgrounds has needed an upgrade for a while, basketball court lighting, this is one that the rec board's been hearing a lot about, as far as for some of our basketball courts, the kids could play there longer if there were lights. Some improvements at some of these other locations, including Blanca or, sorry, I misspoke, the wheelchair swing, I think you've heard from some residents about a desire to have a wheelchair swing, so that is in there for forty thousand. So I wanted to share this, we did present it to the recreation board, they reviewed it, they had a very good discussion about it and recommended approval by city council for those rec projects, they do average two hundred thousand each year. The other thing we talked about with the recreation board is, if you look at our comprehensive plan, and if you look at a lot of our community efforts, outdoor recreation, utilization of the river, the trails, those types of things are a huge priority, and we have a lot of great community partners working with us on that. You maybe didn't see a lot of projects in that CIP related to that, part of that is because we're able to get some grants. The other part is, if you remember when we did the ranch management plan, we talked about maybe doing a conservation easement over just parts of the ranch that we knew we weren't going to develop, have some of that habitat there, and those types of things. And so we're going to restart those discussions, but some of those numbers were fairly significant of several hundred thousand dollars. And so our thought was, is we could repurpose that into leveraging more for grants along the river, the trails, and those types of activities as well. So it's not that we forgot about the river and the access and and programming for that. So with that, I will open it up, I think you have to open up for public hearing, and then if there's any questions.
Okay.
And he is also here as well, if you have questions on that CIP.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brooks, so at this time I'll open it up for a public hearing, if we have anyone in the public who would like to make some comments. Ms. Martinez, could you please give instructions of how to be unmuted so that they can make comments during this time?
Yep, if you want to speak during this time, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen, if you're on the Zoom app. If you're dialing in by phone, you'll dial star nine, which will raise your hand for you.
Okay. See any hands, it looks like we only have two attendees right now, and I know both of them, so I'll go ahead and close this public hearing right now and bring it back to council. If you have any comments, raise your hand, or if you would like to make a motion, feel free, feel free to do so at this time. Counselor Grego.
I guess I'll start, I just wanted to thank the staff, Heather and her staff for all this hard work, you know, to put the bit, a budget together during these tough times with COVID, it's a, it's a tough deal and for them to come together and and I think it's it's a good budget and and we'll see if we can continue to work together with that. Just congratulations to all the staff and Heather.
And Counsel Grego, I appreciate that, but I also, even though I did the the presentation, we've got Ms. Judy Keloff, who is silent on this call right now, and her and her staff with Kristen did a lion's share of this, every department head went through and did a lot of work, I don't want to downplay that, but Judy was there in every meeting, double checking every line item multiple times, and so since this might be her last budget meeting, I just want to say thank you.
I totally agree with Heather, and I, I always address it Heather and staff, but I, I know the the role that each department head plays, and especially Judy, you know, she's someone, and now Lisa's going to take the reins there, but yeah, I, I totally agree with you, and I didn't want to misspeak there, but thank you, both those staff members also.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Okay, Counsel Brawls?
Yeah, I'll second the motion to approve this appropriation.
I think he made a motion.
Did try to make a motion?
No, I just made some comments, but I could make, I can make that motion that we prove ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-twenty.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Grego?
Yes.
Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda here is resolution number thirteen dash twenty-twenty, accepting a GOCO grant agreement. Is that going to be?
So Mayor, I believe we still have the pay plan, the public hearing for ordinance twenty-five dash twenty.
Thank you. I missed that one.
So if you want, I can go ahead and start talking about that one.
Go ahead, please, please.
Okay.
Thank you. So this is also a second reading, as we indicated before, the city manager only has the authority to hire positions that are within the pay plan as approved by city council. This pay plan, based on the budget, includes a one percent pay increase for everyone, so it essentially shifts the entire pay plan up one percent. We want to see how revenue is performing about mid-year, and we may come back and and see if if we can do another percentage, but at this point, we felt that the one percent was was a safe increase, and it also applies for the two positions not included in the pay plan, which is the municipal judge and city manager.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks, so at this time I'll open it up, the public hearing and second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-twenty. Ms. Martinez, will you please give instructions of how to be unmuted? So if we have any participants who would like to make any comments during this section, they can.
Yeah, if you're on the call and you want to speak for this ordinance, dial star nine if you're on the phone, it'll raise your hand, and then if you're on the Zoom app, use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I would now close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counsel Grego.
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion, approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-twenty.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yep, Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Counsel Grego?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next, resolution number thirteen twenty-twenty, accepting a GOCO grant agreement.
All right, hi, Mayor, Council, good evening. Please to present resolution thirteen twenty-twenty for your consideration. You might, you might remember a couple weeks ago, it was considering a a resolution for a grant application, the state trails grant, this is accepting a GOCO grant in the amount of about thirty-four thousand dollars to finish an exciting project. This really gives us complete funding to build two pedestrian boat ramps. It's remarkable on several, several angles, I'll try to be brief, one is the the innovative innovativeness shown by GOCO, they just came out with this program in the spring, we applied for it, the whole start to finish was like four months, and I, and I need to give staff member John Reiser credit for this entire project, there's three or four grants behind this, not much city match at all, and you know, a good segue from Heather's talking about the importance of outdoor recreation during the pandemic, the growing nature, the comp plan, speaking to us, focusing on river activation, this is tangible progress toward that goal, so we're pretty happy, we're excited, we're proud, the project is out to bid right now, we expect construction to to be in November. Yeah, there there's, it's so again, it's about a thirty-four thousand dollar grant, this is just GOCO requires a resolution for you to accept that, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions on it, if you have any.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Rice, for that explanation, and and we're so proud and happy to see other success you all are having with getting all these grants. I see Counsel Brawls has his hand up.
And a good job, I have, I've been for those boat ramps, where are you going to locate those boat ramps, what, what, what part of the river?
Sure, Counsel Broyles, so yeah, I didn't give much of an overview, thankfully, if you look at those attachments, you'll see the maps there, and you can get details if you want, but the the put-in is at the new North River Pavilion, which is kind of above the Disc Golf Course, and the takeout is at the State Avenue Bridge on the north side, and those were kind of areas, low hanging fruit, where we had parking, where we can make this happen. Eventually, a system is envisioned of maybe a takeout at Cold Park or the Farm Park, Adam State University, even the National Wildlife Refuge, but these were the first two steps, it's about a mile and a half float. And the North River Pavilion, you know, we put that in about maybe two years ago up there, yeah, thank you, Heather, for the map, and that's, that ramp will actually allow for a trailer and kayaks and boats, Adam State Adventure Program often has eight paddle boards or kayaks on a trailer, they'll be able to They'll be able to back down to the river as well as pedestrians who just want to float on a tube or what. And then the takeout down at the State Avenue Bridge there, we won't be getting a trailer all the way down there. There's a little more sensitive habitat and, um, you know, the bridge is there. We just have to watch what we're doing. So, but still, no more waiting in the muck now for, uh, people to float and paddle on the river. So really excited.
All right. Thank you. Good job.
Okay, um, any other hands? I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Um, so. If we, if anyone would like to make a motion, please feel free to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Once again, Andy, thank you and your entire team. You all work amazingly together as a team to collect all these grants and we really appreciate that. I will be using a boat ramp, by the way, several times next summer. Trust me. All right, good deal. So, um, let's take the vote, Ms. Martinez.
Yes, sir. Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number twenty six dash twenty twenty.
Um, that's me today.
Good, Ms. Martinez.
Um, so the background on this is, uh, convictions in the municipal court usually result in fines, sometimes in community service and in rare occasions, um, jail. Um, right now Colorado will bring it for the past few years. Colorado law, law has not allowed, um, jailing of a defendant for failure to pay a fine, even where it's established that a defendant has the means to pay, except in rare circumstances. Um, given that background, there's little that the city can do to collect delinquent fines, um, other than for traffic fines. Um, where we can issue an O G W, which is an outstanding judgment warrant or a default. Um, when we issue those, um, it sends it over to the state and they can revoke a driver's license and not get it back until they pay that. Um, for everything else, there's nothing we can do. Um, so we usually issue those O G Ws or defaults on unpaid traffic fines. And then everything else for unpaid fines has been getting sent to collections. Uh, when referred to collections, the collection agency will take a cut of the amount received, which typically ranges from eighteen percent to twenty five percent of the amount of the total amount we've sent over. Um, currently, there's no provision in our ordinances for collecting that collection fee. So anything that they collect, they're gonna take their cut out. Um, we did have a contract with the state and they did add a percentage on. So we would send their full amount and they added a percentage on, um, once they got that account, but they sent us the full amount. So they've already, everything in collections has already had this fee. We just didn't have anything for our ordinances. And, um, since it's not a state collection agency anymore, we're going to a private collection agency, um, this allows us to add that fee on. Um, so this proposed ordinance adds the cost of collections to the amount owing when a fine costs restitution is referred to a collections agency. Um, but it also addresses our current practice of providing payment plans, which we don't have formulated, formalized right now. Um, and it gives the judge discretion to waive costs as well as fines and fees, which the current ordinance denies. And it also reworks the prior section thirteen dash fifty four to make it more readable. And Eric did attach a red line showing those changes.
Okay. Ms. Martinez, thank you for that. Uh, I see one hand up. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Holly, for the explanation. So for the fees, would we, when we send it to the collection agency, will we do that math every time? Will it just be automatic? How, how are we going to make sure that it is consistent for all of the people we're sending to collections?
Um, so we will be doing a contract or, uh, it is a contract, right, Eric? The contract with the collection agency. Um, it will be eighteen percent, um, with the collection agency we're talking with right now. So it'll be eighteen percent. But it will be us adding it on our end before we send it over to them.
Okay, so they will, I mean, they'll know that we're adding it ahead of time, so they'll just send us the, the right amount. So we'll do the math every single time. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, up next, we have Counselor Grego.
I had a question on the, uh, collections agencies. Do we have people like that here locally or is that something you're going to go out to bid? Uh, try to get somebody?
Um, I've been in touch with three different ones and they all sent me proposals. Um, I've gone, talked with the best one or the one I felt was the best for, um, for the city.
But we do have people who are here locally?
They're not local. Um, these agencies weren't local. But the, um, the one we are talking with is the one the hospital uses.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Brawls?
Yeah, I guess, uh, Eric, you've looked at this. It's, it's legal to add on a fee like that?
Yeah, well, it is if we put it in our ordinance. So it's, it's legal to do that in the ordinance. Without that, we would not have authority to do that.
Okay, Counsel Grego?
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve on first reading. Ordinance twenty six twenty instead of for a public hearing on November fourth or sooner after.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you take the vote? Ms. Martinez?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Hey, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have, uh, committee reports. If I can see a show of hands, uh, and, uh, I'll recognize you, so you can go over your committee reports. If anyone have any committee reports? Okay, I don't see any committee reports and hands raised, uh, at this time. So I'll go ahead and, um, I'll just make a brief, I'll just have a brief comment. We did have, um, a committee meeting, uh, with the Parks and Recreation, uh, this past, um, week or, week or so ago. And Andy shared a lot of helpful information in which some of that, uh, you all heard to, tonight. Um, but I'm really impressed with the, um, thought process that goes behind all the grants that they pursue and also the way they work, uh, together as a team. So that's my committee report. Okay, Counsel Grego, I.
I, I was going to say something about the rec board, but Heather did such a good job of explaining what the, the C I P and everything that went through with it. And one thing that now with COVID, uh, a lot of the programs are still down and hopefully we can, uh, overcome that eventually. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Grego and I both are on, along with Heather's, we're all on that, um, Park and Recreation Committee. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to staff announcements. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to my knowledge, I think we only have one. Um, we do have a, a home that has either been condemned or will be condemned here shortly. Um, it is a significant nuisance for that neighborhood. So we will begin the prop, the notification process. We've actually started the notification process, but, um, we're, there's some issues of tracking down who we need to get the notification to and everything. But essentially, this is leading up to where we will contract to have the house demolished. And so, um, I wanted to let council know because we don't do this a lot. Um, but it is something where we used to have a line item in the police department for nuisance abatement and we were carrying about ten thousand to fifteen thousand in that line item for this type of project. But on a year-to-year basis, we were only maybe spending five hundred or a thousand. And so having that big of a line item, it was, it was just eating up budget that we didn't need it to eat up. So what we did is, um, last year is we said, we're just gonna run that line item at about one thousand or two thousand. And if we have one of these situations, we would just have a budget adjustment. That way, we're not showing that we're, we're, it just works better from a budget perspective. So I just wanted to let council know that, that we are moving forward with that process and if the, if we get it done this year, then it would be part of the last budget adjustment to close out twenty twenty. Um, or if it carries over into next year because of the notification, then, um, it'd be part of the first budget adjustment for twenty twenty one. And the address is eleven oh nine Bell Avenue.
Okay, all right. Thank you, um, Ms. Brooks. All right, no further staff announcements. So that brings us down to, looks like, uh, the last item on the, well, not quite the last item, but, uh, the Local Liquor Licensing Authority Action on the Consent Calendar, uh, B. So, uh, Counselor Daniel, I'm sorry, I see you have your hand up. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I would like to pull this off of consent calendar because I have a question about our documentation. Um, so if that is, um, acceptable.
Okay. Um, Mr. Sueso, is that acceptable?
Yes, it, it doesn't take a vote or anything. Any council member can pull that off.
Okay, so now we've just pulled that off, um, per Counselor Daniel request. So Counselor Daniel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I noticed when I was reading, um, the documentation, there's the right margin is cut off. Um, I can, I mean, we can figure it out, but I didn't know if that, I, I want to approve the license, so it is not about the, the license, but it is about the documentation that we're approving. And so I just wanted to make sure that was acceptable. Um, and I hadn't ever noticed that before. That could mean that I hadn't read things as closely before. But I've never seen our documentation be cut off on the side.
And, and I don't know what you're talking about, Counselor.
So when I open the document, the PDF on pages three, two and three, um, I'm not seeing all of the words on the right-hand side, but maybe it's, it could be my computer and if so, I apologize.
Yeah, I just pulled it up and I don't.
Okay.
See an issue. I mean, there, it's not right justified. So they, the lines are all jagged, but they're all there.
Oh, okay, then mine is missing words and so I apologize.
Is anyone else having that issue?
I just double checked and it's showing up okay for me. I don't know if anybody else is having the issue.
Then team, I apologize significantly for disrupting this. Um, I apologize. I, I move that we approve the liquor license for my brother's place.
We have a motion and a. A motion and a second. Alrighty. Okay, all right. No further discussion. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the, uh, vote?
Uh, Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Absolutely, yes. Okay. Good. We gotta laugh sometime, right? It's all good. Okay. Woo, all right, we're getting there. We're getting there. All right.
Sometimes it feels like you're playing a buzzer game when you go to, when you have to answer and if you have your computer on mute. And I'm really, uh, use the spacebar a lot, so sometimes it feels like you're on a game show, got a buzz first.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, finally, here we go. Uh, council comments. So what I'll do is, uh, if any, if anyone has any comments, I will recognize your hands and allow you to, to make your comments. Okay, uh, Counselor Daniel? Counselor Daniel?
Okay, so it wouldn't unmute. It's, I'm so, so first, let me apologize. I apologize for, that was obviously my computer issue. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Boys and Girls Club Fundraising Gala is this weekend. And so it will be a virtual event. You can watch the event live on their YouTube channel, um, as well as if you've bought a ticket, you'll get a special link, um, and some other things. There are milestone, um, events that will happen if enough money is raised, uh, throughout the night. One of them will be me getting ice water poured on me somewhere. And I think that amount is too low, so I'm pretty sure I'm gonna get a bucket of ice. And then, um, the last one is dunking the mayor. So if we hit fifty thousand dollars raising that night, um, the mayor will be dunked. Uh, very excited about that. Um, and then the last thing, I just want to remind all of us, our COVID cases are on the rise in our community by leaps and bounds. We have people who are very, very stressed out about this. Some of us are very stressed out about this. And so I just want to remind everyone that self-care is really important and the only way we can continue to serve in the way that we serve and do all of the things that we do is if we take care of ourselves. Um, I was living that a little too close to the buzzer today when I went on my three-mile run and barely made it back for the thing. So I apologize for my sweaty face and running clothes. Um, but I do think self-care is really, really important and I want to live what we talk about. And so as you're looking out for people, we do have a COVID response crisis services that are available in our community now through the San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group. Very excited. It can be totally anonymous. People can call if they're stressed out, uh, really talk things through. And that, I think, is going to be an awesome service for our community. So I want to thank them, um, as a community partner for, for providing that. Um, but really look out for each other, look out for yourself and just make sure you're, you're taking care of you, so that way you can take care of others. Thanks so much.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Daniel, and I'm looking forward to you all raising that fifty thousand dollars this weekend. All right, good deal. Counsel Brawls?
I just wanted to, uh, bring up a fact that I've, I've received, uh, complaints, uh, at least from my ward about people, some people going around tearing down campaign signs. And it's disappointing to see that. Uh, I would hope that our community would be more, what, uh, professional, thoughtful. Uh, we have freedom of speech and, uh, let each sign stand on its own and not be tearing down other people's signs. I don't know whether we've seen an increase, but I, uh, we, I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls. Counsel Carson?
Uh, it's funny you said that, Dave. Uh, I was gonna mention that earlier. Uh, I actually saw, saw that today. There was an individual on Facebook that did a post and, and I won't say her name on here, but they, it's public. You can look it up on Facebook. She was in Alamosa. She lives in Denver and she stole people's Trump signs and had spray painted on some of them and had them on her Facebook post and said, hey, I picked up some souvenirs in Alamosa and had them on her Facebook and, you know, for display and was taking selfies. It was just, it was silly and not silly. It was, it was dumb. And, uh, yeah, that, you know, uh, I heard a message today. Um, it was actually Matthew McConaughey that said it and he said, uh, you know, embrace whatever happens and let's move forward together, united. No matter what happens in November, um, because there's gonna be people that, that want unrest and that no matter who wins, no matter what way it goes, they will be, they will be angry. And so we, we should be better examples. Um, so I just wanted to pass that on. But yeah, it is, it's, it's pretty bad when people aren't giving people a fair shot. So we should, we should be better than that. Uh, and just on a note, so I don't forget, this is something that Heather could pass on. Or ask these questions of the relevant people. Uh, we had a conversation last year, Heather, that started, um, in regards to streetlights. The conversation started and moved forward slightly and then left, uh, some people in my ward kinda hanging and they wanted to know if we could move forward with the other three streetlights. They've complained at me a couple of times in the last couple of weeks and, uh, so I just wanted to, uh, remind you just so I wouldn't forget. If you could look into that for me and then just get back to me, I'd appreciate it. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay, um, any other comments? If so, raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any, uh, other hands, so I'll just wrap it up. Once again, thanks again for a wonderful meeting, everybody. I appreciate the participation. And, uh, Judy, uh, Heather mentioned earlier that this might be your last time in a meeting where we're talking about the budget. Just want to let you know how much we really appreciate the service that you has, you have provided. And I can tell you, I've had extreme confidence in our budget. And I can tell you, I've had extreme confidence in our budget uh, ever since you've been on board, and uh, we really appreciate the work that you put into uh, your job here at the city. Thank you.
Good job, man.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay, alrighty, so if there are no further comments, this meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy Halloween, everybody.
All right.